All right, hello and welcome to the District 3 Utah Board of Education debates. My name is Christine Cook. I'm the Director of Education Policy at Sutherland Institute. Thank you for joining us here and online, and thank you to our candidates. Also, a special thank you to the host of this evening, which is the Utah Education Debate Coalition, a group of organizations including UAPCS, Hinckley Institute, Sutherland Institute, United Way of Utah, and KSL and Deseret News. Tonight's debate will be moderated by Morgan Lyon-Coty from the Hinckley Institute. So she will set the rules and run the debate. So we thank her for doing that. If you will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll turn the time over to Morgan.
All right, let's see if I can adjust that a little bit better. Welcome to our candidates and to everyone. Thank you for coming out. We will be having our debate, if I can get this all set up. We had a coin toss at the beginning, which Thomas won. He opted to go second. And so we will start with a 90-second opening statement from Linda. After that, we'll do about 30 minutes of prepared questions that our candidates have received. And the latter half of the debate will be audience questions. So please be thinking of some questions that you would like to ask. So we have a timekeeper, and our candidates can also have 30-second, 60-second rebuttals if they so choose. So let's start with our opening statements.
Hi, I'm Linda Hansen. I live in West Valley City. I have six children, and all of them have gone through Utah Public Schools. I am also married to a wonderful gentleman named Ben Hansen, and we've been married for 37 years. Just so you know a little bit about me. My two youngest sons have autism, and so I often advocate for kids with special needs. I spend about probably 20 hours a week visiting schools and getting to know my district. The district is fairly large. We have most of West Valley City. We have all of Magna. We have all of Twella County and all of Jewell County in this district. So it's quite a large district. A couple of things you might not know about me that I'll just share that are not education-related. I have a green thumb, and I can take little tiny plants and make them into monsters in my house. So my dad is a biology professor, and I think I must have gotten that from him. So I'm very good at growing plants, inside and outside. And another thing is that I am a family historian. I am the Director of the Hunter Community Family History Center, about 10 minutes away from here. It has 16 staff members, and we open it, and we help people do their genealogy. And I love family history, love genealogy, and I do it all the time. So that's just a little bit about me, so that you know a little bit about me.
Thank you. Thomas?
I'm Tom Nedderberg, and I am from Eureka, Utah. I have been a teacher for 37 years. I have also continued in the education profession since then for a couple of years, working in another position where I advocate for teachers. I have a large, yours, mine, and ours family. We have a culturally appropriate 11 kids between us. So, and they range in a large gamut. There's one that is kind of Asperger-ish, and I've had two that graduated from high school with their associate's degree and have really excelled in school. I feel that education is an important part of our society, and my experience as an educator is why I chose to run for this office. I also wanted to say a little bit about myself. I've been active in Eureka politics. I was on the city council. I played in a band for 30 years, so if you needed Mick Jagger, I can do it. I'm not very good, but I love to do it, so I'm done.
Thank you. So for our first question, I'd like to ask each of you, and we'll start with Tom. What are the two most important functions that the state Board of Education plays? And why are you uniquely qualified to help the board perform those?
Well, I think constitutionally, the state board was set up to be kind of outside of the traditional state government. And by doing that, the state board can advocate for public education throughout the state and set up as a standard, the standards for districts. And they can also be in a position where they can monitor what's going on with various districts and be a clearinghouse for data. And that's what I think a lot of the state office of education should be doing.
I believe the very most important thing the state board needs to do is hire the superintendent. And that's one of those things that a lot of people forget about, because right now we've got a great superintendent, and everybody loves her. But if you don't get the right superintendent, it cannot be good. So it's great if you hire the right superintendent, and that's the most important responsibility. If you don't, then you have the wrong tone set for education. The other thing is, I believe that it's important to go out, get to know local superintendents, local school boards, and educators. Because if you don't talk to the people who are in the field, then you don't know what's going on, and you can't make good policy. And so that's the other function, I think, that school board members need to do, is get out there in the field. We have a huge district, but it's one of my favorite things to do, is to get out and talk to teachers, find out what the problems are, and then help them problem-solve. And sometimes we have to go to the legislature to do those things. But that's my favorite part, is to go out and see what we can really do to help education.
Thank you. For this next question, Linda will go first. This is a question that we've liked to ask at each of our debates, and it's been an important and pretty controversial topic in recent years. So we've had a change in how teachers are licensed here in the state in the last couple of years. And it's been met by pretty stiff resistance in some camps, and other camps have celebrated this and view it as opening up and allowing to help with our teacher shortages. So our question is, what are the purposes of teacher licensing? And what role should the state board play in determining who holds teacher licenses? Linda?
I really think there are two main purposes for teacher licensing. The first one is to set the minimum standard for teachers. So everybody knows that teachers have hit that minimum standard when they have a license. The second one is a safety net for students, because on occasion, on a rare occasion, let me say that, because most of our teachers are wonderful and never get into any problems. But once in a while, we have a teacher who does something that's inappropriate, and then we have the ability to take away their license. And so if we didn't have licenses, we wouldn't have that ability to take them away, and there wouldn't be that safety net for students. So those are the two things I think licensing does. And since the board is the person or the entity that gives the license, they're the ones that should set the standards for the license.
Thank you. Tom?
Well, I definitely believe that the board is the gateway for licensing for teachers, and should be. And I think they should set high standards. And I know that in the last couple of years, they've changed the standards for licensing in a couple of different areas. And I don't know if you want to say lower them, but change them so that the teaching experience that they have in college may not be applicable to the license. And so I feel it's really important to have a high set of standards and to be able to have teachers show that they've completed those standards and that they are ready to teach in the classroom. I know in our prep question, it talked about the UEA or unions being opposed to it. I don't think the unions are necessarily opposed to the standards. They just want high standards. They want good standards. They want standards that teachers, to show that we have a great teacher in every classroom. And the state board is very important in that process, to set the standards and to monitor them, to ensure that they're complied with and to ensure that teachers meet the community standards that we have as well.
A similar question. The state is facing teacher shortages, and our rates of teachers who leave the profession after their first five years of teaching are quite high. So what policies or policy or policies do you think would help school districts and schools help retain those teachers? And what's the role of the school board in this? And Thomas, I think we're with you first.
Okay. I think teacher retention is a very complex issue. It involves the fact that teachers, on a whole, they graduate from college. You have a four-year degree, and they're earning, you know, seven cents on the dollar compared to other college degrees. And so that's a problem. But it's not something necessarily that the state school board can deal with, because the money for hiring teachers comes from the legislature. So therefore, you have to be an advocate for just that part of retaining teachers. There are many other things required to retain teachers. The working environment, what benefits they have working in the system, if there's something to fall back on after they've devoted their life to teaching and education, like a good retirement system. So it's a complex measure that I think local school districts should be able to get direction from the state office to deal with. But it also needs to be dealt with with each individual district, because I feel that local control is the important element that I want to stress, because districts want to keep their own teachers, so.
Thank you. Linda?
I have three things that I think would be helpful. I think changes to licensing would help. We're having a difficult time getting out-of-state teachers in, and we have a difficult time, when I'm talking to teachers, they have a difficult time moving around in the system. So I've met several elementary teachers who would like to be high school teachers, but they're being told they need to go all the way back to school and start over again. And so we need to make that a little more easy for them to be able to go back and move around the system a little bit if they want to change what they're doing. So I think that would help with our retention issues a little bit. I think also that teachers want a teacher-leader pathway. They want to be able to be in leadership in a school without having to become an administrator. And so I constantly hear about that, that they really, really want this pathway. Other states have it. I think it's something that I've been working on with the licensing department, and I expect in the next six months or so, we would get a plan so that we could have that teacher-leader pathway in place. The other thing is, they need more pay. Teachers are leaving because they don't have enough pay. And they're tired of paying for school supplies. Five, six, $1,000 every year for their own school supplies. And I think we need to do something about that. They shouldn't have to pay that much for supplies. Their stipend should be higher. We need to do something to help them so they don't have to pay for those.
The state school board manages a budget or distributes $4 billion in this state. And Linda, you'll have the first shot at this question. What qualifies you to help manage such a large and important budget in our state?
It's a lot of money, $4 billion. My employment is in finance, so that's... I've been a state financial manager, so I've been trained by the state to do state finance. So I understand all of the systems, how it all works together. When I look at a spreadsheet or anything else that tells us what the budget is, I can read it. I know what it is. I've also been the treasurer for a nonprofit that gave million-dollar grants out. And so, and I also was at many levels of PTA over local PTAs and their budgets. So I trained them on how to do budgets. And so I have a lot of experience in finance, in budgets. I'm on the Finance Committee for the State Board of Education. And so we see everybody's budget. All the budgets come before us, and we get to see all of those budgets. So I feel like I have the capability to do that. The other thing, I'm not afraid to ask questions. I think a lot of people are intimidated when they see finances, and even if they see something that they don't understand, they're afraid to ask about it. I'm not afraid to ask about it. If I don't understand it, or if it doesn't look quite right to me, then I'm happy to speak out and ask them.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay. I've also had experience with budgets, being on the city council. Wasn't a big budget in Eureka, but it was a budget that needed to be maintained, and we went over that monthly as the city council. I was the vice president of UEA, and it's one of my responsibilities, it was to manage the budget for the entire UEA. And that was something, again, that I did, I asked questions about it, pushed deeper. Had an opportunity to work with a lot of different school districts in my job. Ten different school districts that go from the Tinnick School District down to San Juan. And in conjunction with that, I've worked with the teachers as they have worked with their individual districts on their local budgets and negotiating. And so I'm able to look at a budget and see where things go and what to do with it. And I also know that the State Office has a lot of people that work on the budget, and so the important thing, like Lynda said, was questions. To ask questions, to ask the right questions, to ask probing questions, and to make sure that there is accountability for the money spent. We have tax dollars that we're spending, and we need to treat them as very important and sacred money.
Staying on the same line of accountability that you just mentioned, what accountability measures should the state use to ensure school districts and charter schools use the money appropriately? And Tom, you're the first with this question.
Well, I think one of the important things is to have accountability procedures in place. And to require reporting, I think the State Office does that now. I know that there's also rules and laws in place on how money could be spent. And so it needs to be questioned if a district is spending money wrong. I was a Title I Director and a Special Ed Director in my career. And one of the things that we always had to make sure was that the money was spent for what it was meant to be spent on. And, you know, you don't build a swimming pool with Title I dollars. And so there needs to be that accountability to the state and to the local school board on how dollars are spent.
Thank you, Lynda.
State Board of Education does compliance audits with the local schools. They also do, we have an internal audit department that goes out and does audits as well, so they cover that really well. We also have a tip line, and we get lots of tips on the tip line. People call and give us tips on things that they see going on in their local schools that they think might not be quite kosher. And so then they investigate all of those tips, and it's amazing, all the things we find out from that tip line as well.
There's been an interesting debate in Utah over the last couple of years over how members of the State Board of Education should be chosen. And there's a debate over whether or not these races should be partisan or nonpartisan. Lynda, you are the first with this question. In your view, what is the best way to elect members of the school board?
Well, you know, this is a question, I've been going up to the legislature for 12 years, and I think this question comes up every year at the legislature. I have been appointed by the governor to a council before, and then I have been elected to this position. And I'll tell you, it's a little bit different being an elected official than an appointed one. An elected official, you feel that connection to the people more. And so in that way, I think nonpartisan is great. I think it helps you feel connected to be elected that way. Partisan, interestingly enough, this is a national debate. I went to a conference a couple of months ago, and the room was full of about 200 members of the Boards of Education that were talking about governance and how they wanted to change their governance. And so, you know, in talking to them, it seems like the ones who are partisan had a more difficult time. So I think partisanship just kind of adds a level of divisiveness that we probably don't need in education. And so I'm not in favor of partisanship. The other thing that I learned, just kind of an aside, is you never want to elect your superintendent. There you go.
Tom?
Well, I think about posting on Facebook, and aren't you just tired of all partisan stuff that goes on? I definitely think that the school board should be a nonpartisan position. And I say that because the Constitution of the state sets it up to be separate from the three different divisions of the executive, legislative, and judicial. It needs to be nonpartisan. Being nonpartisan means that all students, whatever party they are or their parents are, get an equal opportunity. That's what our schools should be about. We should not have partisan politics involved at the board level or at the state board level anywhere. We should concentrate solely on providing the best education possible.
Thank you. Beyond elections, I'd like to ask a couple of governance questions. There's also always a debate in Utah about who should be the main driver of education policy. Some believe it should be in the executive branch, the legislative branch, with the State School Board, with local entities. Tom, you're first on this one. Who do you think should drive education policy in this state?
Well, in looking at this district, there's a part of Granite, there's even a sliver of Salt Lake. I don't know if any students live there, but it's in the Salt Lake District. There's Twilla, Juab, and Tinnick. And I believe that the school board in Tinnick knows what they want to do for their children. Whereas the school board in Granite knows what they want to do with their children. And they work at it every day. And so I think that the greatest thing is for local control to allow the districts to set the programs for their own local areas. I think the State School Board has a responsibility in setting up a high standard and goals to achieve. But I think the main driver should be the local school board.
Granite School District has about 66,000 students, and Tinnick has 200. And we have everything in between, including 12 charter schools in this district. So we have quite a variety. So I would agree that we need a lot of flexibility, a lot of local control in the policies that we have. And that's why I keep in touch with the local school boards, the local superintendents, the teachers, and make sure that when we write policy, that we're doing what we can to give them as much flexibility as we can. There have been certain rules since I've been on the board that we just went ahead, got rid of, and said, "We're going to let the local school boards take care of this." So I think we've been really good since I've been on the board at looking at it, saying, "Is this really something that we need to handle, or is it better done at the local level and letting the locals take care of it?" But when we have to do policy at the state level, education policy is done better when we all work together. So when we get the governor's office in there, we get our local superintendents in there, local school boards, when parents, when we get everybody together and all the stakeholders are working on it, then the policy almost always comes out better.
Beyond who drives the policy, the State School Board always has to interact with the state legislature. And in some years, that's been a very positive relationship, and other years, it's been a bit more contentious. So, Lynda, we'll start with you on this question. How do you envision the legislature and the State School Board working together? And what would you do specifically to foster that relationship?
I actually like working with the legislature. Like I said, I worked with the legislature long before I was on the state board. And I think, having been up there as much as I have, that our relationship is better than it ever has been. And I think that comes down to the fact that individuals have good relationships with legislators, and that we've made those relationships so that when legislation comes up, we can work with people. And the superintendent is fantastic about that. She's got great relationships as well. And so I think building those relationships makes a huge difference when we're working with the legislature. Right now, I am on three different work groups on legislation already for next session. And legislators just asked me if I'd be part of it, and I told them I would be, because when you're crafting legislation is the best time to give input. And so I'm working with them now, and we have a lot of legislators who will be new this time. Lot of turnover. And so I'm looking forward to getting to know those legislators too, so that we can build relationships with them as well.
Thank you. Tom?
Well, I think conversation and relationships is extremely important. In my role as the vice president at UEA, I also spend a lot of time on the Hill, working with legislators, talking to them, and being part of various groups that, like the Education Coalition, that worked on putting together policy recommendations for some of the, you know, whether laws were good or bad. I know that sometimes the State Board has been a part of that process, other times they haven't. I think it's important that the State Board be a player, and that the State Board be there, working with superintendents, working with teachers, working with administrators, to also work with the legislators to formulate the best policies and the best laws possible for our students. And to make sure that we have adequate funding. So, very important.
Thank you. This is our last question from me, and then we'll turn it over to the audience. So I hope you've all been thinking of wonderful questions. Today's economy is very different than the economy two or three decades ago, and I think we can expect the economy in two or three decades to look very different than today's economy. So how will you work to modernize public education and ensure Utah students are prepared to succeed in increasingly technology-driven economy? Tom, you're first on this question.
As a technology director for 17 years, there's a couple of things that I've learned. One, no technology can replace a good teacher. It's important for good teachers to use technology and to kind of push their students to be able to deal with some of the technologies that we have out there in the world. But no one can know what's going to happen 10 years from now or 20 years from now. We have to be able to teach students how to learn to think and how to be able to participate with technology that they're going to have thrust on them in the coming years to come, and how to deal with all the social implications that come with it. And so I think that it's important to train teachers, to be able to help them think about the future, to be able to help them think about and use the technology that they have currently, but to know that teachers are essential in the process of using technology.
Thank you. Lynda?
I think that districts have come on board and charters have. When I first started on the board, and I'd go visit schools, very little technology there. Now there is a lot. There are one-to-one devices, there are smart boards, they're using much more technology than we saw them use in the past. And the thing is, they're using it so well. One of our districts, Juab School District, is actually a leader in teaching other districts how to use their technology. And I would agree that technology is a tool. Kids need to learn how to use it appropriately and properly, but it will not replace an excellent teacher. We need our excellent teachers.
Thank you. If you have a question, please come to the mic and state your name, and then address the candidates. Or Eric has a mic.
Yes, I do. Well, we do have an online question, and it's regarding Proposition 1. And I think funding is always a big question when it comes to public education. Maybe you can speak a little bit about Proposition 1. Thank you.
Lynda?
Proposition 1 is the gas tax increase, but it's a little more complex than that. And as I've been out campaigning, I've been explaining it to people, because they are really confused about how this works. So we have a general fund and an education fund. The general fund is taking money that could be used for education and using it for roads. So if we increase the gas tax, that money can be used for roads, and then we'll have more money in the general fund to use for education. That's kind of how it's supposed to work. But I'm in favor of it, because I think it will be great for funding. We need the funding in education. I just hope we can get the word out to everyone so that they understand it, because there is a lot of confusion out there about it.
And maybe I should have clarified before we started answering, in case we have people that aren't familiar. Question 1 is a non-binding question on this year's ballot that proposes a 10-cent gasoline increase that would go primarily to education, but some to roads as also. Tom?
Well, the question 1 came about as a compromise with the legislature over the Our Schools Now proposal. And so I think it's interesting that where it originated was the business community saying, "We need to have more money in education." Over the last 15 years or so, we have done a number of things that have reduced taxes, which people like, but has also cost the education system quite a bit of money. And so this is a plea originally from the business leaders to start investing back in our schools. Question 1, like they said, is non-binding. I am for it. Everywhere that I go and talk with teachers or community groups, I talk about how important it is to make sure that even though it's non-binding, that there is strong public support for the need to fund our schools properly and adequately.
Can I make one comment?
Please, yeah. 60-second clarification?
And just, yeah. It is non-binding. However, the legislature tells us, they already have the bill written. So if it passes, they're feeling confident that they will go ahead and try to pass it through the legislature, so.
And I would love to see them pass it and have a higher percentage of people saying yes than having them pass it with not much public support. So I'm hoping that we can get a lot of public support to help the legislature do what they need to do.
Thank you. Do you have any questions from the audience?
If not, we've got another online question. Can you please tell us what your position is on allowing the comprehensive sex ed curriculum in Utah schools?
Tom?
Is there a comprehensive sex? No, that's a joke. You know, that's one of those questions where people look at it and say, you know, is it the responsibility of the school, or the responsibility of the parent? I know that the current law that we have, there is a cooperative, working together. I mean, people can opt out of it, people can participate in it. I know that there's a lot of rules and restrictions. I'm not campaigning on changing it. I do think that it should be more of a local school district decision.
Right now, we have abstinence-based opt-in. So parents have to sign and say that they're willing to have their students learn this. And I think every LEA can do it differently. So LEA is a school or a district, a charter school or a district can do it differently. They can do less, they can't do more, if that makes sense, of the curriculum. And so I think now, it works to the needs of the community, and it works to the needs of the parents too, because the parents get the choice, and the schools also get the choice of how they're going to run it. So I'm not in favor of changing it. I think it's working well the way it is.
Questions from our in-person audience? We're very appreciative of our online audience. Anyone in our in-person? All right, Eric.
Okay. What would you say is the biggest challenge Utah teachers are facing, and what solutions would you recommend to meet those challenges?
Lynda?
When I'm out visiting, they're very, very concerned about the students and their mental health. We have a very high suicide rate. From the 10 to 17-year-old range is one of the highest in the country. And those teachers love those kids, and they're very, very concerned about them. One of the things that I've done while I've been on the board was the elementary counseling bill. So I have three bills that have passed through the legislature, and the elementary counseling one, I think, was the most important one that went through. And we worked on it for two or three years, and it passed this last session to put more elementary counselors, it's a grant program, to put more elementary counselors in schools to help with that problem. And so this year, we have 52 schools who have elementary counselors, who didn't have elementary counselors before because of that bill. So that's thousands of kids who've had the opportunity to have someone in their school to help them with the issues that they have. And like I said, that's the thing that I think, education's changing, our world is changing, and kids and teachers are under tremendous stress. But having those extra support personnel in their school has been very helpful, and teachers are really thankful to have it.
Tom?
Working with 10 different school districts and 73 different schools, I've found that to say that there's one thing that all teachers are worried about is kind of, well, it depends on where you are. In some places, it has to do with the mental health, or it has to do with student behavior. In other places, it has to do with... In other places, it has to do with teacher pay, or it has to do with the number of hours that they work. And so I think the best thing that can happen is that teachers have a relationship with their own school districts, that they can talk, and they can talk about their concerns, and to be able to deal with it both at the local school level and at the local district level to try to address them based on the local needs that every community has.
There is another question I'd like to ask, in case, maybe giving people here a little bit more time to think of a question, about talking about evaluating schools. We've had a lot of debates about how do we evaluate schools, and sometimes it gets complicated if too many students are opted out of standardized testing. So what is the best way to evaluate the success of our schools? And what is the state board's, what do you believe is the state board's role in that evaluation? And Tom, we're up with you.
Okay. Well, I think the state board's role is to gather data. Now, what data do they gather? You know, or do they assign a letter grade? Personally, I think it's kind of hard to sign a letter grade. I know that that's what has been done in the past. But when you have tests that are designed to check student growth and you use that to determine if a school is passing or not, you're not using the test for the correct reason. So there are a number of things that go into what makes a great school or what makes a school failing. And you need to look at those individual characteristics, whether it's demographics, the quality of the teaching profession, and you need to be able to weigh all of those things and put out a report on all kinds of different data so that people, when they are looking at the school, can determine and say, "Yeah, I see that there might be these issues with the school, but I think I can put my student in the school and be successful." So I think taking the data, gathering it at the state office level, disseminating it to the local community, and allowing them to use it is the best way to judge schools.
We have a dashboard now that gives all kinds of data on it besides the SAGE scores. And yes, I agree that they're not very valid in some instances for schools because the opt-out rate is so high and you don't know which kids are opting out. And so it's not very good for grading schools right now. And the grading schools thing is not a state board of education thing, it's a legislature thing, just so you know. And so if you look at the dashboard, the dashboard has all kinds of things on it. It has attendance, it has CTE completion, it has, gosh, anyway, all kinds of data on it. Let's see, what else could they have? Oh, graduation rates, that's another important one. So you can look at all of that and kind of make analysis of that. It also has demographic data, so you can see what the demographics are in any school that you have. So it does allow people to look at it, get a good sense of what's going on because there is other data there. It also has ACT data. So I think it's helpful to have that dashboard. I know that I've had kids who've moved from state to state, and they have found that it's helpful to go on their state websites and be able to look at schools and compare schools and look at all the data. And so I think it's important for people to have the data and be able to look at the data. And I think it's good for the public too, because I think the public needs to know that their taxpayer money is being spent appropriately, and this is what's happening in their schools.
And I'd just like to clarify a little bit on the opting in and opting out. I think when you use tests in a high-stakes manner, it, you know, it makes it scary. It makes it scary for kids, it makes it scary for teachers. And yet, testing data is important. It's how you use the testing data. And when it's part of a grading school formula, again, it just makes those stakes really, really high. And so when you look at these other demographic and other programs to look at a school, if you can have the testing data not be so high stakes, I think you can work on lowering the opting-out rate and so that you can get a better view of what students need for their own individual growth.
Linda, would you like your 60 seconds?
Yes, if I could. You know, as a parent, I loved assessments, and people probably think I'm crazy. I never opted my kids out because I always wanted to see how they were doing, and I thought that was a great way for me to see how they were doing. But the legislature has put us in this kind of position where we do have to use school grading, but they do give parents the ability to opt out. So that's something that we're working with all the time, and I understand that there may be legislation coming forward on that too, so we'll see.
Thank you. Yeah, looks like we have another question.
So we've read a lot about ESSA, the Every Student Succeeds Act, and our attempts to try and get a waiver. So on the one hand, it's an opportunity to receive funds for vulnerable students, and on the other, we sometimes get burdensome regulations. So what role do you think the federal government should play in education policymaking?
Linda?
I think most people would prefer they just give us the money and then let us make the policy, but, you know, that's not going to happen because they're giving us $120 million in ESSA, with ESSA, and they want to be able to determine some of the rules that we live by. And so we have to make a choice. And I am not willing to give up the money. What we do is we try to talk to them, try to make our plan as doable as possible for us so that it's not as difficult. But I'm not willing to give out that money. Most of that money is Title I money. We have lots of Title I schools in this district who desperately need that money and use that money. So that's money that we need. But as far as them being involved in policy, I would prefer that, you know, they were involved as little as possible.
Tom?
I like the money too, but I think that when they, you know, try to control what the state does, that makes it tough, except that, you know, a lot of times, it's done in a general guideline way, and it's how an individual district will implement it. I mean, there are some guidelines to Title I money. You don't build swimming pools with it. You know, you provide instruction. And so there has to be some oversight and some coordination. And when it was first put in, Title I, and later Special Ed with IDEA, it was to raise the standards for helping students, and they provided some funding, not full funding, but some funding for it. And I think high standards are always good to have. I think the state is perfectly capable of figuring out what those standards should be, but if there's some money coming from the federal government, it's good to get some of our taxes back here in Utah.
All right. With that, we will move to closing statements. Tom, you chose to go last with closing statements, so Linda, you have 60 seconds.
Thank you all for being here. I love to talk about education. My goal is always to do what's best for the students. And whenever I have to make a difficult decision, and you can probably guess that there are some difficult decisions considering we have such a wide variety of schools and students in our district. I always think, what, how is this going to impact the students? So that is really my guiding light, is how, what's going to happen to the student if we pass this? When I first started going to board meetings many years ago, I would sit there and, having been an advocate for special needs kids, they would never talk about special needs kids at all. They would never say, "How is this policy going to affect special needs kids?" And some of those policies, I was really worried about what they were going to do. So as a member of the state board, I often remind us, when we're doing our strategic plan, when we're doing policy, that we need to look at all students and make sure that what we do fits all students and is best for all students. And so thank you so much for being here. I love my job, I love what I do, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Tom?
As a teacher and administrator for 37 years, I have a lot of experience in working with the schools and seeing how policy affects what happens every day in the classroom. For me, it's extremely important to be able to have a voice at the state level, one, to advocate local control so that school boards can make the decisions that they need to to make sure that they have good schools in their own communities. I want to advocate for professional growth. I don't want unfunded mandates. I don't want technology in the classroom without teachers being trained. I want teachers to be able to have an opportunity to have professional development. And I want to see a great public school for every child in this state. I know that we're worried about just our district, but I want to see it statewide and I'll say particularly in our district. I know that it's an important responsibility, and it's a great opportunity to have, and that's why I want to run for this office and why I've wanted to serve.
Thank you. I'd once again like to thank our board, the Sutherland Institute, United Way, Hinkley Institute, Utah Association of Public Charter Schools, and KSL and Desert News. And of course, please, let's give a round of applause for our candidates. Thank you. Good to see you, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I bow.